We have a thumbs up. All righty, I believe we are live. So, good morning, everyone. Those that are present here in the room, those that may be watching online, and those who may be reviewing the recording of this meeting at a later date. Today is July 10th, 2024, and this will be our regular B O C C meeting, the first for the month of July. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite Mr. Byron McDaniel up to provide us with an invocation and lead us in the pledge, if you could join us.
Good morning. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning with Thanksgiving, and we ask that you lead us and have your way, Lord. Protect us, protect these leaders, these county employees, protect our public safety people as we move forward and try to do the best that we can for this county. Heavenly Father, we say these things and ask you for your continued protection, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I know that call for wisdom and protection to our Lord extends to the future boards for this county as well. So, thank you. With that, it is 9:02. Emily, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Thayer?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Schroeder?
Here.
All righty, we have a quorum. First item of business we have is approval of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First items of business we have are the items on consent. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, we approve the consent items on the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to elected official department heads and staff reports. Sure, Susan, come on up. Yeah. And before, welcome. Could you have the record reflect that we are also sitting as the Board of Equalization at this point? Susan?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Yes, good morning.
Happy to be here this morning. Just presenting to you the 2024 preliminary evaluation for budget purposes. I know that I did send to you all in electronic format, and then I kind of gave you a brief overview paper this morning. I'm not going to go through all the figures specifically, but I thought I would go through, basically, a little recap of '23 was our reappraisal year, right? So, we had backfill, rate reduction, legislative reporting, record-breaking appeals, and my team says best year ever. So, I want to give them a big thank you for all the work that they did for 2023. That being said, our 2024, this is what we call an intervening year. So, the 2023 real property values stay the same except for what we call unusual conditions, which would be picking up all the new construction for residential, commercial, any omitted property, outbuildings, and such, if that makes sense. So, let's see. In '24, I'm just going to take you to this spreadsheet, actually. The electronic format you have in your email, and you can plug and play numbers, too. But the first tab there indicates the 2023 actual value that was submitted in our tax rule. And then the second has current 2024 unadjusted values. So, what that means is that with the Senate Bill 224-233 that was passed, the 2023 values remain the same, assessment rates remain the same. And then we have the $55,000 reduction and a $30,000 reduction. So, this middle calculation does not include the reduction yet. We have to get through County Board of Equalization hearings, and then the August 25th certification of value to you will include those reductions. So, you can see without the reductions, we have a 13.99% increase in value. And then to the right, a 17.52% increase in revenue, which is a $3 million increase in revenue. And then I have in the third chart there tabulated what I think the estimated $55,000 reduction and $30,000 reduction would mean to us as far as our values go. And we see that reduces us to a 5% increase in value and then a 10% increase in revenue. So, a total increase from '23 to '24 of $1,906,811. So, that is my brief overview. And who knows what's going to happen with legislation depending on initiatives? And if you do go through the report that I have, I did go through what legislation has done this year on the front page. I went through the particulars in oil and gas, personal property. We did see a large increase in oil and gas. We added six more oil and gas wells for GMT. We had rotary drill rigs, pipeline, and our personal property went up also because of that, because of compressors. So, we see an increase in value because of the things that do change annually, like state assess, possessory interest, personal property, oil and gas. So, and then on the last page of the report, it's going to just talk through some key points through the actual breakdown of classifications and then the 2024 legislation that was passed, so 24-233, and then 24-111, which allows for the portability of the senior tax exemption. So, depending on Initiative 50 and Initiative 108 in November will depend on what we move forward with in 2025. I can't even talk about that yet. So, but I think that's really all I had. I did want to remind the public that they have until July 15th to submit their senior tax exemption application. There is a 30-day late time period, so they actually have till August 15th with no appeal rights. But I really want to encourage any senior citizen to get that in before the 15th. And I think that's really all I have.
Just a quick question on that senior thing. If you've been a senior for multiple years, you don't have to re-submit it?
No, that's a good question, Grant. Once you apply for that senior tax exemption, that application holds and stays in place until you move or sell the property. So, exactly. No, once they apply, they're good to go. They don't need to keep doing that.
That actually brings up a question.
Okay.
Since they've added the portability, do you reapply, does somebody have to reapply or show that they've had it previously if they do move? Or what's that mechanism?
Right, so I'm still working out all of the details of that, but the Division of Property Taxation will have an application put together just for that purpose. So, if a property owner, it's 2020 moving forward, move to another county in the state of Colorado, they're eligible. But this is only going to be in place for two years. So, if people find out they need to get it in as soon as possible and not wait, because it's only like a two-year window that they're doing this. But yes, there will be an application specifically for that portability, and they'll have to answer the questions to that. Yes, sir.
I appreciate that, and it's good to see that the steep increases have stopped for just planning purposes for the staff. Last year, we had forgiven or rebated a total of $2 million in property taxes across the county. And for planning purposes, we're looking at an additional million or $1 million reduction in what we collect this year.
Mm-hmm.
So, that'll take us through, hopefully, the end of the spike. And as you said, right now, the rules that are in place are only in place for the tax bills for next year.
Yeah, I think we really want to-
Eventually, big changes in the following years, so.
Yeah. It would be nice to say that, oh, yeah, we're going to get back to normal. There's nothing normal anymore. So, bear with us as the public is asking questions about property valuation and what's happening in the future. Because, I mean, like I said, I want to get through '24, and then I can start concentrating on '25. But it's very difficult to think about explaining to the public what's happening when we ourselves are trying to work through the details of legislation. So, I also wanted to mention, like, our appeals this year for intervening year. We have a total of 26 versus our 2023, 1,499. And so, we're just taking a breath right now and very thankful for 2024. But I know this is a lot of information that I've given to you. So, if anyone has any questions, Tiffany, finance, budget, anybody has any questions, just let me know. And I'd be happy to answer anything that you have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So, we are back to simply being the Board of County Commissioners now. But thank you for that. Did you have anything, Sheri, or, nope? Monty?
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Higgins, Elbert County Public Works Director. I wanted to just briefly talk about the two major pavement, repavement projects we have going in the county. County Road 166, sorry about that, from County Road 13 to Delbert Road. That project is being performed by Martin Marietta. It has already started just in the aspect of doing erosion control. And then the major pavement will probably start milling next week. That job will be a two-inch mill out and a four-inch pave back, but to include bumping the shoulders out four feet on each side with an additional two feet of asphalt past what's normally the white line is the edge asphalt. There'll be two feet of asphalt pass that. The shoulders should be nice and smooth and safe on their slopes. Some areas down through there, we do lose some right away. It varies in width. So, but Martin Marietta and Kim Lee Horn came up with a real nice engineered up plan for that. So, I think that's going to end up being a really nice, well-done pavement job. That, like I say, has already started. It is due to end at the end of September. We have talked extensively with Martin Marietta about the school, and they're planning on working through all that and around, you know, pickup and drop off and that kind of thing with the school kids. So, we were hoping to get it done before school started, but it just didn't quite work out that way. County Road 158, we are in conjunction with, in cooperation with the Developer of Independence on that project due to start the 15th, which is next Monday. That will include a leveling course of asphalt, very thin leveling course, and then a three-inch overlay on that one. No extra shoulder, no extra asphalt past the white line. Once it's paved, it'll be shouldered with shouldering material. That one, as I said, will start next Monday. Both of these will kind of be run at the same time. It may cause a little bit of traffic delay for the public here and there, but for the most part, they'll, you know, be able to travel one lane. So, the weight will be minimal at each end of the projects. And county has full oversight of both of them, so.
Yeah, I think you answered the question I was going to have, was whether there'd be full closures or flagging and what.
Yeah, it'll be your typical, you know, several hundred to 1,000 feet of lane closure at a time. But, you know, flaggers on both ends, traffic control, and then let traffic go one way, release them, let the other one go the other way.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Especially the 158. I drove it yesterday. So, one of the things I noticed is how many patchworks are on there? And from over the years, I'm not saying they were yesterday.
Right.
Where I'm going with that is, is the underlay under that road adequate?
Yeah, it was cored, and they actually did a, like, a, it's a new process where they do it from above with some kind of sensory material. And the subgrade is adequate enough to do exactly what we're going to perform here. That was studied out prior to the workup of the job. So, I think what has happened in the past is truck traffic and things, and just, you know, once the surface oxidized and alligatored, the water penetrated those areas, and then they blew out a little further. So, it gave that perception of subgrade issues when it really wasn't. It was just a timing thing. We didn't get it patched soon enough to, before it blew up due to water infiltration. If you don't have any questions about those two jobs, real quick. County Road 112, the flood road that was, is still closed from the flooding last year. We are almost all the way across that with putting it back together. In fact, if someone had to, or emergency services, they can travel across it now. We still haven't opened it up because we're still tracking large track equipment back and forth across that road. And there's a lot of equipment working out there. So, we haven't quite opened that road up yet. The locals have been told if they need to travel it, they can, they could go across there in, you know, on a weekend or something. But we hope to have that road probably opened up within the next two weeks fully.
I know that was a big project and one that was purposely left until we could have full FEMA oversight of the rebuild so we can get as much reimbursement as possible.
Correct, and part of the thing that took the longest in us getting out there was waiting on the Army Corps Engineers permit because we had to have one on that big of a job, working in the creek bed and such.
Do we have any other county roads that are still in the reconstruction phase?
That's our last one from the flooding of last year. We still have a couple spots we need to add a little gravel to here and there, especially out east. But other than that, no. Any questions?
Nope, thanks very much.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All righty, at this point, I'd like to open this up for citizen public comment. This is an opportunity for folks to bring forward issues that aren't on the agenda for today. We'll wait until all comment is received, and then if we have responses, then we'll make them or take issues to look at at future meetings. So, I would ask anybody coming up to provide their name and address for the record and try to keep their comments to three minutes. So, if we have anyone, Don, good to see you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don Gray, 16,000 Highway 86. My favorite topic is Excel Energy. As you know, last month, they had a community meeting with landowners that were affected by this. At that meeting, they stated, two or three different times, that they would submit an application to the county before the first of this month. Obviously, we haven't heard anything, so I'm assuming that has not happened yet. Again, one of my arguments with Excel is lack of communication to tell us one thing, and again, they do nothing about it. So, I'm just asking for an update from the county's perspective on that. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Gibbels, 19656, oh, my gosh, 19656 Wheatamaya Road, from where I lived for a minute. Elbert County Environmental Alliance. I, too, would like an update. And I just wanted to let you know, last week, I believe it was last week, I don't know my address, so I'm not sure what the date is either. The Gazette ran an article about the lack of people going out for the fire department or trying for the fire department. There was an interview with TJ Steck, and he's the fire chief in Elizabeth. And he talked about the lack of volunteers and the lack of people that they are able to recruit. And one of his comments was, "I will be honest with you," the fire chief said, "a three-to-five-year outlook in our area where fires are burning right now is pretty bleak." And he said that the areas in eastern Colorado, they're not growing, and so we're not getting the additional tax revenue that would allow them to hire people, which frightens me fighting Excel because, one, there's the increased chance of wildfire, which we have addressed time and time again. With diminished resources, that's scary. And also, with the decrease in property values that will occur, what's going to happen to our tax base that would go to our fire departments? So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And it was in the Gazette, if you'd like to read it. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. As you probably suspected, because we would have publicized it, we have not received an application from Excel or any communication indicating any timing, whether it's shortly at hand or not. I had seen the interview with TJ in the Gazette, and we've talked quite a bit in the past. I think it went into a lot of detail. And I know the average age of our volunteer firemen in the county and throughout is approaching, on an average, retirement age. There's just not a lot of young folks, as he said, throughout the rural areas that either want to volunteer or they've left the rural areas to get other jobs. So, it is truly a concern of all the fire districts. And as we age as a county, Elbert County is, on average, about 10 years older than the average in the state. Their calls for service, for medical calls, are going up dramatically. And again, that's a function of many things. Some of it is the cost of housing. We don't have starter homes, so we don't have starter families. We have people that are aging in place. So, that is something that does concern us all. Also reported fairly recently were discussions between Excel and the P U C on monies that they were devoting towards. In general, it wasn't discussion of this pending project, but money that they are putting into fire abatement and mitigation, tremendous amounts. And they talked about things like AI cameras that can detect smoke and heat prior to anybody seeing a fire, burying of line, lots of things that they, it would seem, may be committing to. So, I don't know if that is part of the delay in finalizing their application, but it certainly opens the door for us to be asking those questions when we do see an application come in. And I know your comment, Carrie, on the effects on the tax base and individual owners is something that, an issue we have raised internally to be looked at, is what is that impact on the county as a whole and its ability to provide services? Let me add to that. Okay, while we got folks here in the room, did want to take a few minutes to address what seems to be bubbling around on social media in regards to the extension of contracts for our county manager and our county attorney. There's a lot out there that is not true, that is actually unfair, both to these two gentlemen and to the citizens of this county as a whole. I don't think there's anybody in this room that likes to be lied to. I certainly don't. But it disturbs me greatly when people put out half-truths, innuendo, bad information for what seems to be the sole purpose of stirring up their neighbors and causing angst in the community. The three of us at this table, Mr. McDaniel in the back, our other elected officials work very hard, put ourselves out there. And part of the job when you get here is to take the slings and arrows that are directed at you, and that's absolutely fine. People should have a healthy distrust of their government. That's kind of what built this nation. Oversight from the press, oversight from citizens is welcome, and it should be directed at elected officials. It is absolutely inappropriate and wrong to attack employees of this county. Most of the employees of this county are citizens of this county, neighbors, friends, our raising families. Regardless of whether they live here or not, they are working for the betterment of our citizens. There have been questions raised about the amount that these two gentlemen make. It is absolutely in line with the market values for the jobs that they do, for their levels of experience and their skills and what they devote to this county. We've worked very hard over the last two years, our county manager leading that effort to bring all of our employees up to the market rates. We have about 220 employees. The last two employees whose pay we addressed were the two that worked directly for us because it seemed unfair to take care of ourselves before we took care of everybody else in this county. Prior to that, the ones that we'd addressed were those that work in HR and finance and the people on this floor. Everybody else in this county has been brought up to the local market rate. We need to do that. Otherwise, we lose employees to higher-paying employees in the area. And it has been a struggle. But that is part of what we do as budgeting. You know, if people have questions, we're happy to ask them or answer them. I've had two emails from people that were just asking, "Have you seen what's on social media?" Not expressing concern, and one person had expressed some concern. You know, so if there's a question about decision-making that's happening by this board, it would be nice if people would ask this board, not add to conjecture and the, just chatter on what I would call antisocial media. So, with that, actually. Dallas have anything to add? I've got a few more things.
Yeah, I'll just, I agree with what Chris said there. And I think probably the frustrating part for me is we have all been very clear that we have open-door policies for the public to come in and talk to us and to just go off on whatever's being put out on social media, which has really turned into a blight in our county, state, country with people no longer talking to each other but just being keyboard warriors and putting stuff out there just trying to reinforce their point of view, whether it's true or not, is really troubling. And so, I just, for the people watching, for those in the room, we have that open-door policy. We'll talk to anybody. You may not agree with what we tell you, but we at least understand our reasoning and our thought processes and why we ended up where we were. And to actually have a face-to-face conversation and communicate is the only way that it's going to calm everybody down and for understanding, and that's what we need.
Yeah, one of the things, and maybe it's engineering me coming out, but I like to take a statistical approach of knowledge, real knowledge and facts. And based on what's being shopped online right now is you've got to look at all the facts, not just partial facts. You've got to evaluate the real information. And going back to what Chris and Dallas just said, if you come into any one of our offices or all of them, if you choose, we will share the facts. And like a good example of what we're talking about is the statistical analysis of all the counties in Elbert, not in Elbert County, in Colorado. And where the decision made for some salary increases was made based on something within the market parameters. And then the other thing is, is that one of the things we as commissioners, certainly me, is I want to treat all of the employees of Elbert County similarly and fairly. And so, that if we look at the overall impact of salary increases for the general population of our county employees- for the general population of our county employees, you'll see that since Chris and I got elected eight years ago, that we've substantially increased salaries for all departments. And part of that was, is that we were coming, when we got elected, we were coming out of a time when we're in what I call a lengthy, deep recession. In fact, is we didn't have enough money in the budget to pay for one quarter's worth of expenses. And I'll never forget, a supplier of food for the jail called and said, "I will never supply food for the jail again, because I didn't get paid in the fourth, or, yeah, the fourth quarter of last year, or a year ago." I'm not sure which one that is. But the whole point is, is now we can pay, we've got a balanced budget, we've got sufficient funds, we can pay one full quarter without any income. And the whole, where I'm going with this is, you got to look at these things as budget planning. And the, having that outside statistical study done on salaries for different departments, this one, the sheriff, our road and bridge, all of these different things have been analyzed, and we want to be as fair as we can and in, in order of our budget. Thank you.
I would just end, again, the topic wasn't brought up in this room, so I don't know if it's of interest to the people in the room, but just wanted to have this on the record. The salary range for both these two positions was determined to be in the $210,000 to $240,000 range. We picked a midpoint, not going to the highest, and they're certainly not at the low end of. But the focus of kind of what's the input versus what's the outcome is really what I'd urge people to look at. Both of these gentlemen save this county much more than we spend in salary and benefits each year. The county manager's decision to bring our IT services back in-house and off a managed service contract that had continued to go up and up and up has saved a half a million dollars just through the first half of this year. And that's going to be perpetual savings going forward. That more than, that more than covers the increase. But since we arrived, it has always been our philosophy that you invest in efficiencies, whether that's new and better equipment for road and bridge. We want to put money into things that pay back to our citizens. Part of that is putting our money into experienced, educated, skilled employees. It's a, it's a decision that is made regularly in local governments, just within the county. And I'm not, I'm not putting out these numbers to target individuals, but as comparison. The Elizabeth School District, much smaller budget, smaller scope for the superintendent than the county manager, was hired two years ago and brought on at $180,000. I'm, I'm sure he's received raises since then. The town manager of Elizabeth, that has about 40-ish employees and a much smaller budget, a much smaller scale of things to deal with, has received raises that are now pushing $200,000 a year to run that town. I'm not saying that's inappropriate, and probably it's very appropriate. Elizabeth Fire, this last year, all the employees got a 25% increase. I'm sure the fire chief is also pushing a fairly high salary. These are all very skilled, educated, devoted public servants that give back far more than they receive from our taxpayers. That's what we expect from all of our employees. The focus is on the service to the citizen. The county is not a jobs program. It's just, we're in the service industry. So with that, I'd really like to get back to our agenda, but I think I feel better. So I hope this has been helpful. So, moving on to our discussion items, and we have none today, but I guess I just made one up. So we'll move on to action. First we have is consideration of minutes from our June 26 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the June 26, 2024 minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the June 26 meeting minutes and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next consideration of the July 1st, 2024 minutes. This was a special meeting for the, just the approval of a liquor permit for Albert Days. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes from the July 1st, 2024 meeting as written and dispense with the reading of those.
I was not present at the meeting, so I will decline to make a motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion then. Grant's, I guess, recused, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The third item we have is approval of an updated resolution for appointments and reappointments. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the update resolution for appointments and reappointments.
Second.
Yeah, motion in a second to approve the updated resolution for appointments and reappointments. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. So, board planning. I guess we'll be coming up at the end of the month on our audit submission, from discussions with the auditor that will likely be, we'll have a special meeting for that presentation right at the end of the month, which is good. I would like to kind of just keep hearing updates on the paving projects and how traffic's working up that way. And I guess it would also be good, we've kind of started into our initial work for next year's budget, so just kind of an update on where we're at with that. So, that gets us going, and certainly we'll have our minutes from this meeting to approve. So we have no more business this morning. This afternoon, we'll be hearing two items. One's a small rezone. The other is a EDZ site development plan for a business that would like to be started on County Road 166. We do expect quite a bit of public comment at that, so the, the hearings themselves will be held over at the fairgrounds. They're noticed for this location, so we'll reconvene at this location, open, continue, and then we'll move over to the fairgrounds. But if there's anybody here this morning that is planning to come to those, I would just go straight to the fairgrounds. Otherwise, you're just going to see us open a meeting, close it, and, and run away to get to the fairgrounds. And we'll get some signs posted on the, on this building as well, so folks know where to go. So with that, it is 9:38, and we're in recess. Thank you for coming out.